Okay, we'll call this a special meeting to order for sort of business and budget. Budget agents to the United States of America.
One edition of the.
The other thing on our agenda is budget type issues and review, so I will turn it over to Mr. Michael, who's going to do the general.
Okay, so I know we've had a lot of conversations recently about the general fund in particular. To recap, you know, what we continue to see, of course, is an increase in healthcare costs. We have made a shift this year recently about allocating administrative staff costs back to the department, so that is going to shift over time in terms of how that impacts our federal fund. And then, of course, we begun the process of the payback from the police department to general fund, which is going to shore that back up. If you look on this first page with the the chart, which, you know, again, has done for Andy because he likes his charts. The, I'm not sure why it didn't print, but that first blue line up at the top is the total expenditures. And then the orange is the revenue, so you see that we we start to kind of readjust and get the general fund back in line as we move into 2026. You know, this, we're we're still obviously needing to restore health to the general fund by looking for all options to try to reduce costs across the board. I think that's going to be an ongoing statement as we talk through all of the departments, how we reduce costs, how do we use our money most wisely? And what can we do to to minimize the impacts of things that might be federal like healthcare? So with that high level summary, any questions I can answer for you? You do have the specifics, as you know, I think, all through each for each fund in terms of the actual line item budgets.
What do you pay back on monthly for police?
It's yearly, it's two hundred and fifty thousand, two fifty one, actually.
For ZI thirty one line, so what, is it three years?
And I guess I could explain how this specific, the document works. The top is the revenues, so we see each specific one, and then the total revenue, like for this year, we're looking at nine hundred and ninety one thousand dollars. And then you see the administrative expenditures. On the next page, you have the township fall slash admin expenditures. Then you have the zoning. And then on the last page, you have the little ones, and then at the bottom, it shows those total expenditures. So you see all of those totaled together, let's we're going to be about one point two million dollars this year for expenditures. So at the end of the year, the fund balance will be two hundred and eighty three thousand if all that happens.
And the role of the expenditures and revenue is at the bottom of the first page with the chart. That's where those numbers align to.
The pre meeting, so at least got my caution again here, because it's hard. I know, I see. So on in the township, this is the expenditures in the blue area, I have to move, but the seventy two thousand, if I'm in twenty twenty five, there's seventy two thousand for contracted services. And I am told that that is mostly IT services.
IT, cell phones, internet, any monthly charges that we have that are things like that.
I did fail to ask you if we need to adjust, or did you already have the conversation about the question in numbers of
Workstations, is the number of workstations accurate and reflected in here?
That would be in police, but I mean, in these numbers, did they?
I had overestimated their contracted services anyway, because they have so much, they actually have money, extra money, so I overestimated their appropriations, just because if you don't spend it, it doesn't matter, better to over.
Okay, so so we've already.
So we should be at the bottom of the year.
Okay. Failed to ask that, and we didn't see any changes in other departments, so it was purely for the computers number, it was purely just police, yeah.
Under contracted services, though, is is that where our phones come out of, cell phones and things?
Yes.
We're making a transition from Verizon to T-Mobile. That's going to save us about five thousand a year, and that's not a pretty much amount of money, but.
About forty percent. And it's about five thousand, three is police, so a little bit. Hey, shavings make a pile, yes.
That's for sure. And I my plan for twenty twenty.
It's true.
For twenty twenty six.
I can read you.
I figured I would look at how much we actually spent twenty twenty fives when we get to the end of the year, because, I mean, I came in blind, and I really don't know how your expenses work, or I didn't. So we will shore up the twenty twenty six numbers after we close out.
Twenty twenty five. Your, this thirty one thousand under twenty twenty five, the travel and media, it's a shallow training, this is thirty one thousand. Is that way of accounting for the AI training that we're going to be doing, I'm assuming, but we get reimbursed for that.
Right, right.
Within thirty days.
Within thirty days.
Okay.
So yes, that's why that's thirty one thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, but that thirty will come back as soon as everybody has their certificate, they complete the training. And we may not spend all thirty, if we only end up with fourteen people to take that class, that'll be twenty eight thousand or whatever, and then you get, that's what you get reimbursed.
You read my mind, we're not on the hook for the whole thing as we.
And that is an action that we need to take today.
Today.
Okay, but I won't forget that, because we leave ours at ten thirty.
At ten thirty, it could be ten, we do this, right?
And Andy had a chance to look at the terms and conditions that were offered up, and I think he only had one comment, so. Is it laptop replacement, what are we doing on laptop replacement? Let's.
We are, I need to go forward. We are, we replaced two laptops, this year we had plenty of money to replace those two, but we are not on any type of schedule, so we're looking at our, all of our computers, we're going to go to a a scheduled replacement of five years, when a laptop or a computer reaches five years old, we're going to replace it. And that is off of the advice of Eric and David at IT Made Real. When you get to five that they slow down, there's so much new technology happening that they, but we we keep chugging along and to the point where they become worthless once we're done with them, if we replace them every five years, we can at least put them on gov bills and get some money for them, because they'll have some life for somebody that doesn't necessarily need what we do, if that makes sense. So we're on a five year, we're looking at a five year rotation, Luke was able to put together a list of all our computers when they were bought, how old they are, and we will start that process while we started it this year, so.
It's pretty easy, I set it up in our inventory, there's a financial section that lists how much it costs to buy, so we can estimate how much would cost replaced as the purchase date, and then a life, uh, can estimate a lifetime of five, so we print that report annually, and we can see which ones potentially need to be replaced.
We we actually, the two replacements this year were half of what we paid for the computers that were five years old. So we we bought what we needed, we're not necessarily going to replace things with the absolute most expensive, fanciest stuff.
Good example of that is that Service Pro out there, that was twenty seven hundred dollars, whereas what John has now is, what was it, eight hundred?
Eight hundred. If on the expenditures, real quick, it's all included on that last item for other expenses for like three ninety seven.
For twenty twenty four?
Yeah.
So that is where you were covering for police and the certainly the road, I think, too.
I thought that other. For twenty twenty four. On the second from the bottom in township Paul Ivan.
Is that what you're talking about, fund five ninety nine?
Well, I think it was this five oh six and the three ninety seven, yeah, I think the other, both. She would, she was, she was using them both.
Okay.
But then there was we we've tried to understand what those numbers are and what, because it was a lot of just reallocating and not charging, you know, this vendor to this line, that was charging it and then reappropriate or re.
Yeah, I didn't understand, I don't really, you know, pretty much.
I mean, those two numbers, yeah, they're close.
Right, right.
Thousand, which is, you know, that kind of explains going the general fund from one five to five.
Yeah, right, exactly. So one other question was, we talk about capital outlay, repairs, maintenance, those kinds of things. And this, again, is a common theme, but we need to address across the different buildings and and departments. You know, currently, we've got the twenty five hundred dollars there. Can we get, we need help getting our arms around all of the maintenance that's needed and a prioritization list of.
We are actually working on.
Okay. Okay. Because I want to make sure that we're not foregoing minor repairs that end up creating a larger issue, you know, as well.
Yeah, we we are, there are minor repairs, there are medium repairs.
Right.
Major repairs.
Agree.
And it I just, as we move forward to nine, and I've just had to talk about the face of building two, at the bottom, it's where it's rusted now, the lumber underneath there is beginning to deteriorate. You know, so we we have, we have some projects, major projects that may need to take precedence over some of the minor projects, but.
Of course, I'm just kind of thinking of the list, an estimate of what we need financially and prioritization around those critical items.
To be safe, I would think if we can put back maybe four million, we'll.
Did you bring your checkbook?
Now, we we've been having conversations about all the the things that need to be done and how we how we accomplish those things, so we're working on that for you.
So I got a quick question about taking back the time, about the software solutions, but where where are we on that, so I know we don't lose track, I mean.
So where where we are right now, unless Becky, keep me honest, is that our auditor was going to check into what our ability was to, if we can't cancel that contract, well, obviously, we're not paying anything for it. If we are able to recover that money or use that money, since that was part of the ARPA funds. Did you get a final answer, did I?
Well, that was, so, because you paid part of it out of the ARPA funds and part of it, part of it out of the general fund, so I heard her comment was basically depending on how much you get back. If it's just the amount that was out of the general fund, you just take that back in the general fund. If it, I mean, I highly doubt they're going to give you the whole thing back, but.
So we didn't have any, I'm sorry, we didn't have any work done. And we did have Pete evaluate the contract, so now that we've got the answer from the auditor, then we can.
Go back to the say.
For a cease and or termination.
Yes.
Contract. Did you hear anything back from Andy?
No.
Okay. So anything else specific to the general fund?
You and I had a conversation about, and I know this is going to include the allocation of staff up here. And and I know, I don't want, I don't want to take my work and try to transpose it on on the township, but I know that my staff has to allocate. We get something from a lot of different sources, so we have to, if we're working on a project, we have to allocate that time to that project. And I'm sure that the allocation is probably close, if not spot on. Is there a way that we can, because I like things to be driven by data? Is there a way to code certain things that we know, I mean, in general terms, like, you know, I worked, of my eighty hours, I've worked twenty hours on road, forty hours of police, and there are ways to do that without too much problem, if it's if it's too difficult, then that's one thing, so.
Um, I mean, I I've got, I'm sorry, did you have something?
Oh, um, for a while, I did, I actually did that when I started. So what Mary had me do was I would keep like a time log of what I was doing during the day, and then I assigned it roughly to whichever department was most appropriate, and then I printed out that little chart and attached, gave it to her, and she would attach it till the payroll for me that week. I don't know if that's feasible for other people, but something similar to that may be good, it just might be overcomplicating it up.
Yeah, if you I see chat, in your world, I'm working on a project, I'm working on a project for DR. In this building, I could be working on something for the police and road calls, and I immediately shift to road for five minutes, and then I'm back to police. So we're going to, we're going to begin to invest a lot of time and energy making entries of who we're working for.
I get it, and I I don't want to transpose what I know during the day to be what.
Right, if if I'm working on a project for a department, and that is going to consume four hours of my day, I think that's feasible. But when you have a continuous movement of what I'm doing throughout the course of the day
Right.
between all the departments, then I think it becomes more of a burden and waste of time than it does of benefit, and that's just an opinion. Once you get used to that, I mean, if we're going to talk about our other worlds we work in, I mean, you know, the legal world, I think you have fifty cases probably on your case load, you probably touch twenty of them every day, and you keep tracking your time in tens of an hour. So, you know, I could be working on a brief for one thing, and then, you know, I'm keeping track of that time, and then I get a phone call about something else, and I go back to the brief, but and then that's why you have, you know, twenty entries a day at least on your time. Is is there?
So I don't think if it is too problematic, that's one thing, and I don't want, I just want to make sure that our allocation that we talked about is as accurate as possible, and it, that that's all, and.
No, I I get it, and if there's, at first, I've never had to do that, so for me, it it doesn't compute in my mind, for them, it's part of the world. That's our whole world.
Yeah.
Yeah, but the the one thing I think would make it easier here is you're really only allocating over, you know, a handful of.
Okay, so so let's let's be candid here in terms of the conversation, I I think, where this is, is the concern that the allocation, because of where road is in terms of their budget, the allocation might be too high.
Well, I don't know, I mean, it's not a road thing, it's just, I just want to make sure our allocations are right at the end of the year when we're saying, hey, we should, our budget should be allocated as format.
Obviously, do it, you do it for like, do it for a month, and just see how that comes out. You know, I I don't know, every month's probably different, but if you do it for a time period, you should be able to say, okay, I spend roughly twenty percent of my time here, thirty percent here, forty percent here.
Now, I apologize for.
I mean, you you raised this at the beginning of the week, and we haven't had time to kind of dig into the feasibility of it yet. So I I'm more than willing to talk, you know, work with John and talk with the staff to see if there's a way to do that, that does not say, okay, now I'm spending fifteen percent of my time tracking my time. That's where we don't want to go.
Right.
So what we're talking about right now in round numbers for twenty twenty six is seventy thousand dollars of township staff, admin staff, going to the road department, I'm not looking at police right now to say what that time limit is. Probably one forty.
Yeah.
Ish, and so I mean, the reality is, our issue is when we get to that particular department is larger than that. But if there's a way that for us to do it in a way that is not onerous, then I'm all for it, because we tried to do our best with a kind of educated guess, and and at the time that we did it, we said, hey, listen, this is our first pass at this, we can reallocate as things shift, so let us take that back and talk about if there's a change that needs to be.
But here's, here's what, here's part of the challenge.
Yeah.
Okay, I get a call from a trustee to say, I need you to follow up on this issue with this problem, you don't, I'm just saying, hey, trustee, you need to follow up on this issue with this prob, this problem. So now I have to determine, is really a road issue, is this a police issue, is this a zoning issue? Okay, so a lot of our time is invested following up on things that are requested by either department heads or trustees or fiscal officer or whoever.
Fiscal lady.
Fiscal lady. Lady, I'm sorry. But I just, as we begin to look at this, I think the people who are making those requests should be cognizant of, yeah, I need you to do this, and and we're going to bill this to, we're going to show your time to whoever. That way, my interpretation of who I'm working for and the person making that request of who I'm actually working for at that time are the same, does that make sense?
I think also, like, in my case, I'm entering the bills, so it's always all three, like, I don't know how I would split it or know which one to charge it to, unless I just counted, I had five bills for general and ten for road and and do percentages that way, so I don't know how I would split it.
This doesn't affect me, because obviously I work for one department, but I think we're overengineering what we're doing, and the reason I say that is it's just like a typical week for me, I, we have a staffing every Monday, I provide an agenda to Administrator Pelosi and tell him what we're going to, or, I'm sorry, Petrozov, uh, what we're going to do. And so when I provide that to him, there's always an open area, because as he could say, there's things that pop up every day, I may say, you know what, on Monday, I'm going to work on budget, on Tuesday, I'm going to work on training, but then Monday comes and we have a problem in the neighborhood, and then, you know, so I think it's hard to say, and I think it's the same thing, and I'm not going to speak for everybody, but I understand that issue, it's hard to
Yes.
you lose productivity, because now you're spending fifteen, twenty percent of your time going, I spent two hours here, I spent one hour.
You don't, so I don't just, you just, you just have to get you.
I.
You know, you know, at the end of the day, spend two hours, okay, now what do I, what do I do today? Everybody does it differently, there's programs for attorneys, you can just click on stuff, but you're shifting gears constantly, and you're, you know, you're you're trying to capture tens of an hour, so if I got five of them, it's, but it's not that hard.
We could put a pin in that.
It's not that hard to do, it's hard in functions, it is in other functions, but I get, the ask is out there, and and the answer is that we will take that and see what, if, the way that we can do it.
Think about it.
Um, in in a way that does not, is not onerous and gives you the information you need.
I don't do, so my staff doesn't do it like attorneys, okay? When we go back and we pin our card, we do some estimates, okay? I spent probably two hours on that project, and I spent four hours on that project and two hours on this project. We don't get down to tens of hours, I mean.
So you don't, you don't worry about six minutes?
No, we're, we're, we're estimating, whether that's accurate or not, nobody is actually auditing us to do that, it's just, it's more of an estimation.
So then I would, then my response to that is that the estimates that we gave you in terms of how we allocated the money was our estimates based on that assessment.
But their estimates are on a daily basis versus an estimate of saying, hey, I generally spend this much time, or I think.
I'm sorry, this is Andy, I'm going to take this real practice.
Or I think that.
Are you coming to your meeting?
Or I think that I, you know, because the police are bigger, they're probably sixty percent. It it really is, it's it's a closer estimate than maybe what we were estimating, and we may be spot on. Listen, the ask is there, you guys can follow up, you could.
I I'm more glad I wasn't half hour talking about it, so. But, yeah. Point five, that'd be a point five.
Sorry, okay. I don't have any other questions now.
Sorry, what did I miss? I missed the joke.
It was an attorney joke, so.
And he thought it was from eleven to twelve thirty. Oh, so anyway, it's on his way, it's on his way.
Okay.
Okay, but anyway, ask is there.
The ask was there.
And we'll try to figure out if there's a way to do it.
Thank you.
Well, and I mean, and again, I mean, honestly, if we get to the point where some portion of that allocation is the meaningful difference in the department's budget, then, you know, we can also.
That's fine.
Okay, so again, I'm going to suggest, since we since Andy's on his way, that we go ahead and talk about, do we want to go into police, or do you want to? Got another parcel tree for you, I need to just got, here, you got, that's your goal, right? Please, here we go. Well. Maybe we have.
Maybe you're just wishful thinking.
Andy's always get earlier the quarter, too.
I know. Well, if if more than one of us had gotten it at a different time than I anymore, did you get one? Yeah, you got one, okay. We just have an extra, or did I not give him one for this? All right, Steve, do you want to talk through, or, because I know I haven't had a chance to look at what you provided.
It's the same thing, we, it's the same thing I provided, I just wanted to make sure he has fresh copy.
Okay, gotcha, gotcha. Okay, so obviously with the levy, I mean, stating the obvious with the recent levy, we're in a much better place than where we were. Again, callouts for healthcare, that's going to continue to be a driver of our costs. The addition of the allocation of the administrative staff, just pointing that out here, that that's a difference. And then, you know, again, standards seek opportunities to extend the life, not that we're not going to, we've learned our lesson, we're not going to wait as long, but we certainly also need to continue to be good stewards of their of their tax dollars, and the vehicle replacement schedule. Highlights in terms of line items and the expenditures. And as as referred to before, the healthcare, that's on the the second half of the first page and expenditures. You know, workers' comp is relatively steady, salaries, we know we have an increased schedule across the board, but given that police is our largest department, that's where we see the majority of the increase there. What other items did you want to call out, we've got building maintenance and, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So can I ask?
Sure.
So where's the end of the expenditure list? It says new equipment for twenty twenty to achieve thirty five thousand. What what is that?
That was from the document we talked about.
Yeah.
We're going to go through.
That's the.
Yeah. For some of those questions, I just wanted to kind of provide a high level summary, and since Chief's got some documentation here, then we can move over to that and find out what questions we have after.
Yeah, and and I have a question like for, uh, sorry, the opers, we went from two seventy two to five twenty and back to four hundred, I'm assuming that was just kind of a overallocation for this year to cover.
Yeah, it's partially that, it's partially the late fees also, and then because it was being paid late. And then also, the way she was doing it was the opers, all of the opers was coming out of this opers line, and I prefer to allocate it so that the part that the employee pays comes out of the salary line.
Right.
And then the part that the company, that Perry pays comes out of this opers line, and so I'm pushing some of that five twenty to the salary line.
Got it.
And then that'll hopefully go down.
Okay, that makes sense.
So that way, your salary line truly shows everything that that person received.
Right. That makes sense.
It does, doesn't it? Like to make sense.
See, there you go, confusing me with common sense, I like common sense and facts.
So what you just talked about, Becky, the.
So what you just talked about Becky, the, I had a note that in the line item of salary, even salaries.
Mm-hmm.
The one point six and the one point eight. Um. If I wrote down possibly overstated.
Yeah, well, and it is possibly overstated because I don't know if you're adding staff or not adding.
That's what we talked about in our levy, we had approved two additional hires, so she added that to the twenty six.
Yeah, so I did, I did, I did bump them up quite a bit anyway, just in case, and then also bumped it up slightly more. To account for the extra overs. And then at the end of this year, we can talk about exactly who your staff you think you'll have next year. And again, I know, as you know, we have to allocate everything.
Right.
Yeah, and you have to appropriate it before you spend it.
Right.
It's not been the case in the past.
Um.
So, I, I'm sorry, do you want to walk through your document, please, so then if it's, because some of your questions may be answered there, and then we can go through. Is that okay?
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Uh, which sheet is the first one?
Uh, yeah, that's what, whatever you wanted to talk about.
Yeah, that was.
Are these extra copies?
Do you not have one of these?
No.
Oh.
You have one?
You know what?
Yep, we can share.
Candies, he's on here, he doesn't need it.
There's a new role we're creating, the range masseter.
Oh, yes. You're right, that's my fault, I didn't send it to Luke first, damn it.
I should tell the Luke and non-Luke item.
So, the budget proposal is just, so. I guess I, I think I explained it before, this is what I used to send to Beth every year, and I would say, here's an idea of. How I want to budget for what we're going to be doing. And then this sheet also says budget proposal explains what each item is and why it's there. Um. Most things stayed the same as twenty-five as far as cost goes. Um, I think the only thing I increased was the masseter on the range, um, that is um. That takes care of our training as far as range time, uh, buying equipment for firearms. Um, you know, I I believe, and I've said this a hundred times, we drive cars, we shoot gun. And any type of intermediate weapon we do, we should have training, so uh, we've increased our training a little bit on firearms and driving. So, but the range side is to increase the bit. I don't think ammo is going to increase much next year, um, we still seem to be getting the same price, but I add the extra five hundred just to, as a buffer. Again, kind of like Beck said, sometimes it's an overestimation, I'd rather have more than I need than not enough. So, I don't know if you have questions about any of these items. And like on the community liaison side, that is, we buy candy for our cruisers on uh, beggars night. And we never had a place, I don't know where the money came from, so I budgeted for it, so. Cause in the community liaison, we really don't need a whole lot, uh, Charlie uh, Reed does a great job. But he doesn't really ask for anything, so it is also including we buy pencils and stickers for the kids and coloring books, this kind of covers all that.
So, so this is not related to any salary expenses, purely the ancillary items that might be needed.
Yeah, this is, none of this is salary, um, the uniforms under the bargaining unit, we have a um, amount now. And again, there's a little bit of a buffer in that as well, but I outline the cost of uh, what the exact cost is, and again, post small buffer there. Uh, the bike patrol is um, we do maintenance on our bikes every year, and if they're in the maintenance isn't um. Horrible normally because we try to maintain them, um, but we have bikes that are very expensive that we got a great price on, but. When we send people to training and certain events, we would like to get a third bike, so if we have it in that budget midway through next year, then we'll buy a third bike. If not, then I don't intend to add to that.
How many folks do we have trained for the bike patrol?
Five, I believe.
Can you provide us? Can you provide us a uh, at some point, a breakdown of the amount of hours we've dedicated to bike patrol?
Yes.
And what those events or purposes were for?
Yes.
You wanna touch on the drone, you know, before Andy gets there?
Um, the drone is just more just up to date for software and any maintenance, that kind of thing.
Correct.
Is there additional licensure and things like that that needs to be required or for the drone in addition to the initial?
Just warranty, no, and um, Arlington, um, Arlington, I believe is going to go with the same. Company that we have, and since we share some service with them, they're willing to look at. If we need a software update in the future, they will pay for that because of mutual aid, so we're discussing those kind of things now.
I'll alter everything to the drone.
Uh, I can get you uh, a chart, we have, we use it for events, we've had a couple um, instances with Arlington where they've had. People uh, run from a traffic stop, they called for assistance, and our officers respond with a drone to search the area. So I could get you um, same thing on the drone, I can get the amount of times we use it, what for.
I'm just, I'm curious in that how often it's for our own township use versus.
Somebody else's.
Mutual aid kind of situations.
Steve, when you put those numbers together, can you break it down into um, events? And.
Yes.
Calls for service.
Yeah, absolutely.
So when you say events, is that just general surveillance kind of, or is that? This is a cool view that we get to be the.
Like, I mean, fourth of July was, I was able to watch. When the guys got sick and we had to get them out of there, they were able to actually show fire department exactly where they needed to be because of the drone, but. I would consider that an event.
Yeah.
But mutual aid, calls for service.
Yeah, absolutely, we can break those out like that. Yes.
Good timing.
No, I'm not looking at anybody, I'm just, I know someplace.
You should be looking at yourself here, Mr. Steve. They all got it wrong.
Yeah, you're the only one that got it right. So um. Yeah.
Playing Jim today, so.
So we're on, we're going through um, police right now. And. And uh, we went through just a high level view of the budget and Steve is talking through his. His document, which is this part like this.
I mean, I appreciate you breaking it down, chief, I mean, it gives a nice educational answer.
Anything.
And then like I, I did the expenditure sheet um, for twenty-six, twenty-seven and twenty. Again, I updated this from the last one, from our last budget meeting. Nothing much has changed, um, I took a few things off that we don't need to address, if that makes sense. Um. It kind of like the computers, I with computer replacement, I tried to allocate the different years for which computers need replaced. I was budgeting two thousand dollars because I didn't know how much, but it sounds like we can do it for a lot less to replace some of those, and some of those. Like the desktop computers, we don't need the actual big box anymore. Uh, the small, I think they're called NOC, something like that, the small ones, um, according to. IT made real, that's, our company is, we don't need, we can do something smaller, we just need access.
You should know that, you brought it here.
I can't remember if you can C S E, I did, uh, but they are. We can use something much less because we're accessing our network, we don't have to store anything locally. So they said that should be able to be done for a lot less money, so.
So for your expenditures in twenty-six, comparing those two additional officers.
Yes.
Does that then add cars? Or, okay.
No, we would not need to add any car to that.
It's just uniforms, equipment.
Yeah.
Training. Well, the reality is, based on this proposal, it'll only be one set of uniforms and.
Yes.
Equipment.
Yeah.
Oh, taking leave, Lieutenant Forsyth.
Yeah, because one of the things I talked to. Talked about was. It almost slipped, I apologize. Is Lieutenant Forsyth, I know, has been deemed an essential employee, and I think that with what he does here. And there's obviously a patrol operations side, there's also administrative side, especially with the how collaborative and uh, detectives and so forth. And his only, I've already had a conversation, um, because we had talked about maybe moving him to a thirty-hour employee just to make it a salary position. He wants to be able to do both, he still wants to push a cruiser, and he also wants to keep his administrative duties. So, and I had a conversation about bringing him, just making him a forty-hour employee, we have, we had put money in the budget for two. The difference between an officer and lieutenant, if his salary is moved over to full-time. The difference from officer to lieutenant, I can take out of the part-time budget, because his salary now comes out of the full-time side. So that money that he is being paid out of the part-time budget can be moved to offset his cost to stay a lieutenant. And it also, he would work a schedule that would put him here till seven, eight o'clock in the evening. Which would also save some money on the officer, officers in charge, but it also puts an administrative uh, staff member here later in the evening. And he would cover uh, on his schedule, it would be covering a couple shifts for sergeants as well, he would overlap where he, if there's not a sergeant available, he's here.
So it comes down to the part-time budget and then plus um, benefits that he wasn't receiving as.
Right, yeah, so the salary that Becky put in for two officers is already there.
Right.
The additional part I would pull from the part-time budget to offset the difference between an officer and lieutenant. He would be salary, so he would not get overtime, he, it would be the same thing, there's no overtime, you know.
And the other piece is that the the benefit package is included on the the hiring of two people, so we're really.
Right.
We're hiring a full-time person who was already on our staff. We're, but we're eliminating a part-time person.
Right. Yeah, right, yes.
Or positions, it's not a person, but a position.
And you're replacing your conference room chairs in there, would you wanna replace them with these?
I mean, we could.
So, Steve, talk to me, talk to me about mounted unit and honor guard.
Okay.
What, what? Um, like, I know the mounted unit is, is. The horse and all that other good stuff.
Yes.
And then honor guard, like what you, what, I know that they're at the parade, what other things do they do?
Uh, they do like beggars night and so forth, the eventual goal is to get them to be able to be in the neighborhoods of patrol. The first year they were here, they got to patrol some of the neighborhood. Last year, we, the last year and a half or so, we cut back on the extra just because of budget and so forth. So the actual cost to us is just the officer, we don't have any money invested other than the initial, which was blankets and a helmet, I think it was. We don't have any other cost involved, because if we, if an officer shows up to work an event, it doesn't matter whether on a bike, uh, in a car or on a horse. The horses have no cost to us, they're, everything, care and transport the horses on them.
Can you say more about the idea that they patrol the neighborhoods? I mean, given the distances between neighborhoods and potential to get called outside of the neighborhood, like onto one sixty-one, that kind of.
Oh, no, no, they would be in a neighborhood, they wouldn't, they wouldn't be responding to calls outside the neighborhood, so they would get some patrol. Broke site, they could stop at the school, unload and patrol the neighborhood for a couple hours on horseback.
So what, let me just, let me just add, so, so we're just talking like mounted unit and honor guard.
Yes.
We're, we're really just talking that they're reserve?
Yeah, well, there are two that are paid and we have one that's reserved.
Okay, well, it, it, from, from a outside person and and whatever.
Yeah.
Like, number one. I don't even know why we have a horse, I gotta be honest with you, yeah, I think it's like, you know, for a township and when, when. We got things that are squeezing, even just the line item of mounted unit. I, if I'm a, you know, person not involved in township, I'm sitting there saying, well, wait a second, you know, why, why do we, why do we have this?
Right.
And then the other one is the honor guard where it's a line item that has a cost, I mean, we're just talking to reserve. They're just reserve officers when we need them, right?
Well, they're, I mean, it's a mix of our full-time, part-time and reserve.
Right.
Yeah, and they.
Cause could we just do, like, do away with the mounted line item, because the horse doesn't cost us anything.
Right.
Then it's just.
Yes, we can do it, that's no problem.
I just, you know, from an outside person looking at squeezing, you know, like, hey, are you guys really, and I see a line item like mounted unit.
Right.
And honor guard and and we're, we're talking six grand uh, a year. It seems to me like, uh, that's, like, why do we even have that?
Okay.
You know what I'm saying?
I, I don't.
We don't have.
No, I'm just saying, like.
And I understand, I just think that we don't break it out in the budget, no, okay.
Right.
So really, the budget reflects what he's actually had, the, your budget proposal.
These are breakouts.
Yeah, these are just the breakouts of.
I think it's just easier for us to look at, look at the, the total of what we're looking at for.
That's what this is.
Yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
No, I got.
This.
Yeah, right. I'm just saying, like.
I guess my question is, you're, you're still gonna spend six thousand dollars, where are you gonna show in your budget? What line item does it come out of in your budget? Where are you showing it now, Steve? Wages?
No, I think it was under operating, I believe, I don't know, because that's, I never got an answer until. Becky and I started having conversations about, so I didn't have an answer before, and the actual.
So going forward, let's talk about that.
Going forward.
Going forward.
What line item should we put it under?
For any, so.
I don't, I don't think we have, I don't think we have, it's never been, yeah, it's never been added before, it is what I submitted.
It's just part of what's in.
Yeah, and again, it doesn't mean it's gonna be spent, because I don't think. I'm ninety-nine percent sure we didn't spend a thing on mounted unit this year, because again, our investment into the mountain unit was saddle blankets and I think a helmet. And that's, none of that needs replaced unless it gets damaged.
Can we? Go ahead, go ahead.
And again, we, and I can take it from here and and we can lower the amount, because again, we haven't, we're not buying anything for them.
I, I think you leave it where it's at, I just, I'm curious where we're gonna put it. What, where does it show, I mean, you, you answered that for me. It, it shows up under um, other expenses, right?
Uh, might have been under. I don't think we've put it anywhere yet, because, yeah, we have, it's not been put anywhere yet.
And I think it depends on what the expense is, like, if it's a blanket, that might be equipment.
Equipment where salary for a mounted officer would be.
The budget to specifically be designated for mounted unit.
Right, uh, so Andy, I'm trying to, I wanna make sure we're addressing your question, because it's not broken out in the budget. And as, as a reminder.
Yeah.
A difference from private sector budgets, we have to allocate slash appropriate every.
Yeah, so this.
Everything is.
What I hear from my budget.
This is just what, this is Steve's notes on what he's projecting.
Right.
But it sounds like Andy would prefer it not to be aligned, but he don't want it to be in Steve's forecast either.
Like, I get all of these things, and I get, and then what gives me pause is, you know, those two.
Mm-hmm.
Um. And again, they're significant, you know, they're big, but if they're just like, hey, we've got these officers that we need to fulfill certain things. Okay, that makes more sense to me.
Got it, yeah, I, I mean, and I, like, I use P I O, Sergeant Delbert is the department P I O. I don't know that we need anything with the P I O, the only thing he wants to look at the future is a small backdrop. If we have a media interview, it says something about that size, it just says Perry Township Police, I don't think he can stand in front of, it's a hundred bucks.
So.
I put something there that just says, if we need something or we don't think of something, or even like, and I use Sergeant Delbert. If he wants a polo shirt that's not a traditional uniform, it's sixty bucks, well, I can take it out of that. Instead of the uniform, if that makes sense.
No, I think we're talking about less than five hundred dollars a month across mounted unit, honor guard and P I O. Just to be clear.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I, I was just looking like saying, again, I'm looking at mounted unit and saying. You know, where, that is a hundred percent for a horse, it doesn't include the manpower, that, that, I'm clear, I'm good.
Okay.
I'm good.
Hey, real quick.
I'm sorry.
Um. Why did on our, uh, I did like our P E R S go from. You know, in the two hundreds to doubling to five twenty. To doubling to five twenty, one twenty, call it.
Becky's got that one.
Well, that's also, that was, I mean, it's not a lot of late fees, but, um.
Well, he'd spent three hundred thousand late fees.
Yeah, no, it wasn't that much. I think, well, I, I don't really know what was less last year, but that is what we're about up to now. The salaries went up also.
Well, but it was, it was like two thirty eight, two twenty eight, two seventy two, and then this year it's five twenty.
Well, and I think what she was doing is, I, I didn't really think of all of last year, but I think she ran out of that line and then she would apply it somewhere else. Yeah. And there was a lot of the opener's money went to your ARPA fund. Yeah. So it didn't come out of this line, but it came out of the ARPA fund. So I think that's part of. Yeah, entirely. Let me answer. We can give you answers.
About the salaries. It goes basically one, two a million and then it drops to seven fifty and then it goes to one point six.
Well, you also had those going to your ARPA fund too. So that's why it absorbed part of that cost. And if you recall, we were paying for portions of police past years. Also out of your general fund, that other line. So that, that year over year is not gonna be an ideal comparison. For a number of things. Twenty six to twenty seven is gonna be much clearer. Frankly, even twenty five, you know?
You might think the ARPA funds are artificially.
They made you think you had more money.
More money, yeah. The ARPA funds were nice because they were bad. It didn't allow us to have a true.
Sort of mandated a issue. Yeah.
The sense of security.
We get final twenty twenty five numbers. It's something Becky and I have talked about. We'll have a more clear picture because twenty twenty five currently, we were kinda just stuck with the appropriations that were previously approved, other than the supplementals we've done.
And is that kind of the case? Cause I mean, you could make that same case that Jim was making on all these. I mean, you're, I mean, we weren't using ARPA funding for. Cause I always go back to like twenty two, twenty three. And it should stay without just a, a smaller bump. It should stay pretty much the same. But, you know, like, uniformed tool, equipment and reimbursement. It's nineteen in twenty two, eighteen, twenty three, thirty seven, twenty four. And we're at forty two, five with forty five. I mean. In a, in a two year period, we basically doubled. So was that like ARPA funds too?
Like, you can correct me if I'm wrong. I, we were having this conversation. ARPA funds much easier to use for salaries. Correct. I mean, you could track it a lot easier. A lot of people used it for salaries just because it was easier to track, but I don't know. To Andy's point, I don't, I don't know if ARPA funds was used for that line item two, five, one, but.
Well, for that line item specifically, I'd have to look at exactly what was spent in the past years. I'm not sure. I mean, I know that that's, um, obviously there are uniforms, but also ammo. Yes. And I don't remember.
Reserves switched over.
Well, that could be from the weapons too. When we per, had to purchase, uh.
Fifteen thousand.
Yes, fifteen thousand was the purchase for weapons. Yeah, it's like twenty, I think that was in twenty three, if I remember right.
It was last year.
Oh, it was last year.
So that would be, would you have, that would be explained.
That would, yeah.
Twenty two, two fifty.
What do you say? Yeah.
So from twenty, twenty three to twenty four.
Yeah.
That's explained with the bump into twenty four.
Two, two.
Yeah.
Well, you have to remember twenty five, our estimates, twenty four are averages. So a lot of these numbers for twenty five, I used what we had last year.
And then.
Because I don't know how much you're gonna.
Right.
So that forty two, five most likely gonna be a lot less.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think, yeah, I think we're looking at and play the number based on.
Right.
Well, if we did what we did, yeah.
Which you did in twenty four.
So would you guys say, I mean, we're, we're closing out on the third quarter. Would you say that twenty five represented a pretty typical?
Here, I would think so. I mean, that, there is, I don't know any. The, the only thing to do this year, we normally purchased two cars when we did one this year. We actually did two, but we did one cruiser.
Right.
But we're wanting, that's a, but on a typical year, I don't know that, um. I can't think of anything that would have been any different than the upcoming years, except on the expenditures, next year we have to replace our car computers on the lease.
Right.
Everything else is kind of a standard, normal year.
And that's kind of, that's kind of what I've always, like, I'm really happy we're doing this, even though I was incredibly late. But. This, this is what, I mean, we used to do this behind the scenes, like. You know, when Mr. Myers was.
Yeah.
You know, the administrator, cause he was keeping his, and it was, he was doing it in a way that, you know, like a P and L statement that I could understand. And we would go through it and whatever. And so, um, it's really helpful to kind of see these numbers. But what I'm always after is, how do we get to typical? And, and I don't think, you know, cause even twenty two, twenty three, we were still remnants of COVID.
Right.
Money's coming in and money's going out, everything a debt. And the reason why I say like twenty twenty five to me outside of all the poor shit that we had to, you know.
Right.
That we uncovered.
Yes.
Twenty twenty five seems to me like, you know, I've, I've always used the term back to basics.
Yes.
You know, the basics.
Yeah.
And, and I would say that like roads, police, like what is a basic year that we're back to basics and not trying to be, be more than what we are.
Right.
And less.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying?
I think like Becky and I've talked, when you get to the end of the year, like we've talked, we'll have actual numbers for twenty five.
Yeah.
But I don't know that, again, with the expenditures that are coming up, I don't know that anything's any different because we didn't really do anything. You know? I've al, we've always tried to keep a tight budget.
Yeah.
And especially when, you know, before all this occurred, I was told we were, you know, millions of dollars behind.
Yeah.
So we tried to keep everything.
Right.
There's no reason to change that moving forward.
Right.
We still operate, but we just don't do anything.
We would say when we're at the end of twenty five.
Yeah, I think.
That would be a typical baseline year.
I think that's it. John, that you agree that?
Allocated, some of it's allocated in weird ways because we had to use what palette had been set up.
Right.
Right, right. So it's like totals. Yeah, so the totals, line items, less so. This is the, I, I should cast these out too. This is the appropriation status for each fund.
Yeah.
So this shows, so for, here's the police fund, here's the uniforms that you were talking about. This is what I appropriated just based on what was spent last year. This is how much has been spent. So we're at like twenty five. So we won't spend that much.
Because, uh, you know, so like. Next week, what I'll be doing is I'll be looking at the first nine months of the year, what our actual expenditures were. And then budgeting the last three months to say, we should end the year going from a revenue standpoint and a, and an expense standpoint, and I can do that. And so we can even get, but more importantly, as we're closing out, and this is the reason why, it's like, okay, what are, like, you hit it right on the. We have the, we have the computers in the cars that we have to.
Right.
What are those unusual?
Yes.
Things that are gonna hit twenty twenty six, that we know right now is December of twenty twenty five. So we can say, and how much? So we're, we're getting bids, we're understanding like that, we're even saying, hey. You know, January first, we can cut, cut the money, lose or whatever. But that, that's where I'm gonna get at. And we've never done that. It's always been.
Agreed.
You know, March, April, oh, hey, we wanna do this. And it's like, okay, so next year, do you have two cars? You have one car.
Right.
How's that gonna hit our budget? So when we're making the appropriations, we're, we're, we're right there. Cause if these numbers are inflated, then it makes me feel better.
Oh, yeah.
A lot better.
Well, and I. Appropriate and allocate.
I, I get it, I get it. But I'm saying those appropriations should be a lot closer.
Expenditures, projected expenditures for twenty six.
Right.
Twenty seven. I don't know if you've gotten to that part yet.
Yes.
Okay. So those are the kind of exceptional items, if you will.
Yeah. And, and again, unfortunately, when I'd have a conversation with Becky and Amanda about budget, I couldn't answer when, you know, do you think you're gonna spend this? I don't know what I spent last year because I wasn't able to find the information. So.
So for that.
Yeah, absolutely.
And I, I do wanna call out here just to make sure everybody knows this. I know we've said it before. You're getting the monthly reports now.
Yes.
With a summary.
Yep.
If there's something else that you need to see in that package that would make it more useful, more easily consumed to all parties here.
Yeah.
You know, raise a flag.
Oh, no.
If that's work in progress, it's just what we're providing at this.
I think it's great because if I have a question, I send an email to Becky and she goes, oh, no, this is right. You missed it here or whatever, you know, it's, I have no complaint.
I just mean, like, if there's something else that would make it more helpful, then that can be a living document, if you will, and can change. And, and board members, I wanna make sure you're clear on that too. You're reviewing the monthly reports and there's something else you wanna see.
Who goes somewhere else. When we take in fees for special duty on cruisers. I wouldn't be able to track that, if that makes sense.
So you'd rather, you would like the fees to be cruiser or not, or other fees? You wanna give us some?
Yeah, is there a way to track that? I, so Lori does a, um, end of year report. But I didn't know if that could be broken out into a separate line item that says, here's our cruiser fees that, you know, that says, here's what we brought in.
Under revenue.
Under rev, yeah, under rev.
Yeah.
Um, yes. Yes, we can do that.
All right.
Okay, can I, can I throw a grenade?
Yeah.
Okay. We're gonna have Brian Steele coming to our next meeting, pounding the table for flock cameras.
Yes.
I don't see flock cameras on here. Um, because again, I, I wanna block out of this meeting with a very clear thing, both from the board and from the group here. Because Brian said that you're in support of locked cameras. Is that him, is that him being, I, anyway, all I wanna say is, I want you to tell Brian, hey, Brian. We ain't doing flock cameras. I know where I stand on them, but I wanna, I wanna kind of open it up.
We'd have an offline conversation about that after this for five minutes.
Okay.
Now explain it. My thoughts on it.
Okay. You're, you're the next person I'm looking at. We all know where you're at.
I thought, I, listen, I had, I had that conversation with Brian and I said, listen, Brian, I'm, I'm not, I'm not shy about, I, I think it's a great tool. I said, but whether we have the money, it's an ongoing expense, first of all. Um, I've tried twenty different ways to get other people to buy flock cameras, partner with us to buy flock cameras, uh, and we've hit walls. Uh, whether it's H O A trying to get one and us get one and that kind of thing. I still think it's a great tool. But now go ahead and pay for it on an ongoing basis. It's a challenge. And I said. You know, absent what, what occurred, okay, with him as an individual and his wife as an individual. He is the F O P president. I have to be respectful of that. And it's just like any of our residents, we, we be professional. We allow them to say their opinion. We don't always agree with them. But they, they have a say and, you know, I think because they're taxpayers and all that and, uh, but it doesn't mean at the end of the day that we all land at the same spot. So there, if there's a way to pay for them. Partially or a whole outside of what the revenue that we have. Then we're all ears about that. We're still, we're still willing to have the conversation, still willing, we know what the technology is. What I like about flock cameras is you become part of a system.
Can I touch on that?
So.
I don't mean to, no. We, as a township, to do flock cameras. The way they should be, can't be done. We would need probably forty plus cameras to cover every inch of the township, the way you're supposed to. If we were a square like a village or a city, makes sense. We can't hear, hear, hear. The biggest benefit for us for flock is the access to their system. Detective Mills has solved many a crime based on flock because if a resident says, I saw a red car at this date and time, right after this happened. He can go to the flock system and circle everything around us, narrow down that car and figure out who they are. And he's developed suspects and made arrests and filed charges based on that. The access is what we, what we need. We don't need the actual cameras. The problem is flock will not give us access. We were just informed yesterday, as a matter of fact, that they're going to be cutting our access, I think, as of October first. Because we don't have cameras, lockers.
So, but Steve, it's like sort of the same thing that we did with the zoning, like we kind of partnered with Franklin County. Does Franklin County sheriffs use them?
Everybody uses them, but in order for flock to give us access, we have to have. They're, they're the minimum of two. So. And again, the, the hardest part for me is why I haven't pushed anymore is where do you put those cameras? If we, let's say we have the minus, it, there, it would be six thousand dollars a year. For the record, I think it's worth it because of what Charlie Mills has done with the access, not the camera themselves, the access to get the information. That's the thing. How do I justify saying, well, we're gonna put one here, but not in your neighborhood? Again, you, you, I don't know how that.
Ninety percent of our residents were them too.
Correct.
But there's so much access.
Even then, have multiple a, access to the each of the units that.
Yes.
I think it.
You're buying that.
We have them in the township. They're probably owned. They, so we can get access privately, but we're not paying for it. So flock is going to cut our access.
Well, and that's sort of the reason why, you know, I brought it up. I think it's one of those things that the civic associations, um, have a part in. You know, if, if we're gonna do.
They won't do it, Andy.
I, I.
We beat our heads against the.
Because here's the thing, and you hit it right on the head. If all of a sudden we put one more than tails, then we gotta put one in Brookside, we gotta put one at, you know. So immediately we're five.
Yes, or more.
And that's.
Yeah.
Right. And so what I'm getting at is, is it's not just, hey, we need one here and where you're being said, but it's like, it just ripples. And that's the thing where if it's like, okay, if civic association says, yeah, this is something we wanna provide our residents.
Yeah.
Then, okay, the, the cost falls on them.
Well, and, and again, well, I don't know how the civic associations feel because we approached this subject a couple of years ago and they were. They liked the idea, but they don't wanna pay for it.
Right.
Between Brookside.
They want the responsibility of, oh my, this information, you got access to this information on our side.
My thought was if we do two, we should put them one at each school. That is one of the most vulnerable targets in our township. And if somebody's coming in that, you know, we have protection orders and other things on people that can't be at the schools in trespass warnings. If they drive into the school, we're notified. That's my suggestion. I just haven't pushed yet because we've had access to flock for four years.
I bet I did.
They have not.
I like that.
They have not, they have not cut our access.
It's the gaining of the access of the system.
Yes.
It is, is really what it is. It's not.
Yeah, it's not the cameras.
I never have thought about just the schools, which within cover most of the two main areas in the most vulnerable part of the township.
And that's why I said that you can't argue that if there's one at each school, we can't cover the neighborhoods all the time, but we can have some, one at the schools. That, and they've agreed to do two. The minimum is three. They have worked with us to say, well, only, we can do two.
Their own cameras, right?
They don't have.
They're just not flock cameras.
Right, they have a camera system.
The difference, Michelle.
I get, I get that. I'm just trying to.
Could you do, I mean, Brookside obviously is on McBay, which is the busiest street.
Yeah.
Brookside, could you capture Club View on a school camera in Worthy Hills?
You mean with the flock camera?
Yeah.
Well, you, you, you can put it anywhere. They will come out and say, we, you know, you tell them, if we tell them where we, the area we want it, they'll find the best spot.
But again, I mean, that's a different conversation. I get your point. I get the value there, but it's. No matter what, if hypothetically, we were going to go down this path and hypothetically do two cameras, you're not covering everywhere.
Oh.
If you're, so if you choose a street, I, I get your point about it being a school, that's sort of a. Key area, but if you choose a street, then as a resident on a different street, I'm gonna be like, why isn't it on this street?
Yes.
Why isn't it on that?
And they're not moving.
I mean, these are my.
They're permanent.
Right, they're ten thousand dollars a piece a year.
You know, you have two neighborhoods. I'd venture to say ninety percent of the people in Worthy Hills. Come in and out of Worthy Hills two ways, on South View, where they come through on Hard Road or at the bottom of the hill.
Right.
Out there in High View.
But it's not really about watching the residents. I mean.
But that's the only way you get into. If you're gonna come into Worthy Hills, you're gonna come in.
One of three ways.
There's only three ways.
No, I get it. I, I.
And, and I think that one way is very minimal on High. And, and Brookside, I think you're really only coming in on two ways.
No, you're talking about three.
Yeah.
And then the other part, again, if, if I then live in Henderson Heights. So wait a minute, so my safety isn't as important because I'm not in one, I, I mean, it's, we're not a private security company. We are a, you know, public law enforcement agency.
But I.
But every, every entity that has flock cameras is covering the entire.
No, normally what.
Hot spots and there's all kinds of.
No, well, I. No, well, I, and I'll use up Arlington. Arlington does the entrances to their city. So if something's coming into their city, they could say, oh, it came in off of Kenny Road, came in off of Fish and Drew Road. They have, and they have all their entrances of their city covered. That's the easy part because they do this. We can't do that. And again, I think the schools are one of the most important things that we have to keep an eye on a daily basis. And since the schools don't want an S R O in the school. The schools are, we've had conversations, so you all know, full disclosure, we've had conversations with Trent Bowers and. I can't remember the other gentleman's name. Anyways, Tim, Gary. If we went this route, they're okay with it. They, you know, they think it's a good idea. They would support it. So that part's covered. Again, I just haven't brought it up because we've had access for the last four years, no cost.
No, we're not gonna have.
Now we lose on October first.
So, so really it's about access. So we.
That's.
Creative and figure out how to, how to somehow get access.
If, and the other side we could do, and, um.
So Franklin County can't issue you a, a license?
No, this is. Flock is, flock owns a license.
No, I am, I, I got it, but I mean, Franklin County is a purchaser and.
Right, they can't share with us.
They, they don't have control over the access of the system.
Yeah, they're all, they're only allowed to have it for their people. And the only people that can get access to it is people that have access to flock system initially. So the. The ones that choose the road, I don't know if you all know, there are four cameras on Schuster Road that are privately owned. If they donate, so we could put those, if so, if one of the businesses said, hey, we'll donate money for you to put two of those cameras in your name. They'd lose access. You can't have private and public access, so to speak.
Yeah.
It can't be done. So if they give it to us, they'd lose access. If they have it, they can share with us and say, here's what we have. This happened, you know.
For that area.
Yeah, for that area. So, but they, we can't get.
But would it, with the, um, agreement that we have with other law enforcement, if Charlie's looking for something. Essentially, is he able to go to like Dublin and say, hey, can we, you know, I'm, I'm tracking something, would you guys be able to help me out?
Dicey.
It's, it is dicey because the agreement with flock, when you sign up, is you only share with agencies that have access to flock. Now, if Dublin, if we have a mutual suspect, if there's a robbery here in Dublin, we believe the same person, they can help us. But if it's just solely us.
Yeah.
They don't, they're technically not supposed to do that by their contract.
Hey, Andy, I know this is an important topic.
Yeah, I, I just.
Yeah, we can.
The only reason I brought it up is because I just don't want to see it.
And again, I would probably revamp this, had I found out that we're losing access, but again, we can talk offline about that.
Okay. We talking about road?
Yeah. Okay, so road should already be in front of you.
Me.
Uh, before, I'm sorry, before we close, police, is there any other item we didn't discuss that you want to call out?
Um, I don't believe so. Um, I didn't see anything, um. Yes. Um, no, I don't have any questions.
Thank you. Okay, moving to road. And I don't, Ian, do you have anything else you, we need to distribute or are we done? Here, help. You've got one, okay. Yeah, I already have one, okay. So, to call out some, you know, likely known, um, key. Changes, uh, increases in costs for road, again. We're still gonna talk about healthcare everywhere we go, that healthcare continues to be an increased cost. We now have the Salt Barn loan rate payments, uh. Now that that's built in place, the addition, as we've talked about already, um, for the allocation of administrative staff. And then just some opportunities at a very high level. And then Ian, I will hand this right over to you to talk through as you've got here. Um, you know, to consider reevaluating our road paving schedule, given where we are with funds and the, um. Really perhaps deferring whatever road paving that we need, that we can, um, further out. Talking about just the general schedule of how frequently we repave roads. Versus if there's opportunities for more of a repair, um, a, a minor repair. Other things that we've already talked about proactive repair and maintenance of whether we're talking about equipment or. How we identify things that can be, um, cared for in the township before. The, the size of that repair grows to a replacement. And then also the opportunity to self-serve currently outsourced work that might. Um, you know, save some money for the budget. So those are the highlight items here. Um, Andy, who want to review, and, and team, if you want to review the line items here, and we can pop, then hand it over to Ian to talk through. His list.
And I will quickly point out, there's five different funds, which is what takes the. The first page is your two M V L T funds. The second page is your gas tax fund, and you have your road. And then the last page is the road district. And in the notes section on the right, in the top blue bar for each of them, I put what I anticipate. Charging towards each of those funds to try to organize it in a way that I'm using those funds instead of just willy-nilly. Charging wherever I can find.
You're saying willy-nilly isn't a general financial pron?
I mean, I try not to use willy-nilly as a strategy.
Isn't that the singer? Oh, Billy, nevermind.
Sorry, go ahead.
Question, it, I see the complex contract. Is in two different places. It's, one is in the road and it's also in the general fund.
I appropriated it in both, anticipating that at some point I'll find out where to charge it and that's where.
Figure that out, yeah.
I'll bet you are, are the revenues on this page, all of these.
Um, so each of the funds at the top, it'll say revenue, revenues and expenditure.
Highlighted in yellow?
Right.
At the top?
Yeah, yeah, that's the total for all five funds.
Okay.
To give you a big picture. And I'll also point out that in twenty twenty-four, you did receive that three hundred and eight thousand dollar loan. That's why the revenues for. Um, twenty-four were so high compared to the other years for the salt barn.
Right.
Yeah.
And then we got dinged in twenty twenty-five, both the twenty twenty-four road work and. Or at least I had heard we did.
Yeah.
So we got dinged, so instead of usually getting just dinged for the twenty twenty-four, we got twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, as you said, twenty twenty-four, it was around the two hundred thousand dollars that we paid it this year.
Yep.
Uh huh.
Which is standard, but then we had to pay the.
But we also paid.
For the work that's happened.
Twenty twenty-five, yeah, it's just, it's.
It's there. Okay.
I think for whenever they send us the bill.
Uh huh.
Which may be twenty twenty-six, right?
Yeah, which might be to next year.
Okay.
Hard to say.
You don't typically ask for bills.
No, we don't ask for them.
So when is our next, um, I know, when, when were our last two levies and when are they, when, when are they? That was what, two years ago, a year ago?
Twenty-eight, twenty-nine, when they come through again?
Twenty-eight and twenty-nine.
I guess I hadn't looked into those. So did, do they need voted on then, or do you?
Yeah, and they're back to back. We talked about combining them and.
If we combine them, we lose state funds that are related in the account for us, and we're about half a million dollars.
Yeah, and then there's also the perspective that it looks like at one point we're trying to increase one.
Right.
And then, you know.
If we put two together. I mean, it's, it's never been an issue. They've always passed and they.
Yeah, we just have to do the education of the fact that.
But it's good to know that. Yeah, yeah.
So I know I, I talked to Ian a little bit about this because it seems to be the, um, most worrisome portion of the budget. Uh, I think the general fund is, is not as healthy as we want it to be, but it's on a good course. Kind of thing, or it's on a positive, let's say that. Um, and folks here have done an excellent job of that and, but, uh, and two separate funds. Were projected in twenty twenty-six. And we're gonna run, and we're gonna be in the negative. And so. Uh, there's a couple of things, and Michelle did a great job, the overview. I mean, there's. Couple of areas I think we need to start thinking about. One is about work that we have. Over the years have sourced out, uh, that could be brought back into the house and the roads moved to do. I know Michelle's started a list. I know Ian started a list of all the, and. They were gonna get with you and try to make sure that we have all those contractors in place and what is the work can we bring back in? Um, so we need out front, for instance. If you proses, see, I didn't call you. Loses. You started. Um, but we need out front, for instance, is something we can do. We have Michael getting certification, that correct?
He is certified.
He is certified. So that's something that we can, we can look at. These are kind of small things, but, you know, over time, I think they will help. Accumulate, uh, and provide some savings. The other thing is about talking about the, the road resurfacing program that we do every year. Question is, how, how does that get determined? Which roads, uh, are candidates for the year? Uh, what is the basis or the criteria for that? Uh, right now, that schedule does change from year to year.
Goodness.
It's, so it is based on?
Well, we're trying to get twenty plus years out of our roads. We used to have a life cycle. Ten years where roads were getting resurfaced. We're trying to push that out to twenty plus with the fiber map. Um, I think here, we have.
And I court McVeigh West are the candidates for next year.
McVeigh West is, and it's been on the list that's been getting pushed back. Um, there's a lot of alligator cracking. I O Court is on the, the list. The alligator cracking down there is starting to settle. See some base failure starting there where. It does need addressed. McVeigh West is not there, uh, but it is past where crack seal will work. Or extend the life, uh, with cracks out. We have more of a, like a safety risk. Could be covered pretty much all the cracks either.
And, and I'm, uh, uh, cause I don't recall. I know it's been a bit. Um, when were those roads done last? I'm sure you know. I should know because I look out at it. I don't know.
The last time McVeigh West was done was in two thousand and five. We're, we're.
So we're at twenty years.
Yeah.
Ian, you have a, you have an Excel spreadsheet or something like that that lists all the roads?
I do.
And, um. What year it was done, what roads have fiber map, which ones need fiber? Cause I, I'm gonna tell you right now, looking at Clubview and knowing how long those, the, we paved those, you know, especially north. Yeah, north was the first one that we actually used fiber map. I mean, I see you walking all the time. It's perfect, it's perfect. I mean, it's perfect. So.
Clubview was done in two, well, Clubview South was done two thousand and seventeen, uh. Most of Clubview North was done in two thousand and sixteen.
Okay, so that's the range. So you're looking at ten, nine to ten years in.
The fiber map, I'm gonna tell you, the fiber map, what was newcomer done?
Two thousand and six.
Okay, um. Because the way I look at it is fiber map is, I mean, it is proven that, I mean. Proven that that's the way to go.
So does newcomer have agroman?
No, no, it does.
Okay.
Every trip you drive down.
It does. It holds on to a lot of the small. Rejuvenate started going green not too long ago. Yes, was that last year? Yeah, last year. We, we like to rejuvenate within the. Your first year, uh, second year works as well, works good. But I think that's the reason it's gone for ten to twenty years. I mean, you, you look at the Clubview North and South, they were done in whatever sixteen and seventeen. It looks like they were done two years ago.
Yeah, well, think about it. I mean, you're, you're putting a preservative underneath.
Right.
And on top.
Right.
And you're basically encasing that asphalt.
I mean, it's.
Like you said.
Like I said, it's really amazing. So, so with the. With the increased expense of fiber mat, it's proven that it's the way to go. Now.
Fiber mat now is averaging right around six dollars is what we paid the last.
We're losing you.
What's the total unit price with fiber mat?
Without bacon.
No, with, with it.
With fiber mat and resurfacing, we're gonna average this year right around eighteen dollars a square yard.
Okay.
That's if we do not have any repairs needed to do.
So way back when I was in Chatsworth on the road and Brian, uh, worked with Brian. Um, we kind of, you know, just like this, it was the list of every one when it needed, and that was before the fiber mat. So that's kind of changed the whole, the whole game. But what we said is you have a hundred and eighty, or I think at the time it was like a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. A year to spend on roads. You figure out how, how far down the road you can get with a hundred and seventy-five thousand. And that included with the rejuvenator, whatever we had to do from the previous year and that. My feeling is. We basically not like say, hey, Ian, but we say, hey, Ian, here's your budget for the next three years. You have eighty thousand dollars. You decide how you want to do it, but you got eighty grand. That's how much, I, I, and again, I'm just making up that number. That's what you got. We get to, once Salt Barn gets paid off, then it's like, okay, that number, that number goes. Up to whatever, a higher amount. But I just think that we just say, hey, this is what it's gotta be.
We're not, we were not gonna come to the board with the full request that we're used to, obviously. I mean, the easiest thing would be to simply say, we're not gonna come to you at all for anything next year. We could do that. But we would like to propose a smaller package to you for next year and then possibly the following year. And so we were gonna look at, and we're gonna walk through those roads with you and, and give you the basis for that package. We recognize that we're probably at a deficit. If all these numbers were to hold true. And they weren't inflated, they were exact. And we're, we're looking at somewhere around a hundred and eighty thousand dollars in the hole.
Right.
So we know we need to make up that money. The part of it, a very small part of it can be bringing stuff in-house to. And we just need to understand what that is. We have some time to put together a package and it most, it may not be McVeigh West. I mean, it's, it's a long street. So there are a couple of streets right after that, that on the normal schedule, we would said we'd be looking at it. They're shorter streets, so we may be looking at those to do and then going back to McVeigh West at a later point in time. So we'd like to come back to the board with a, a proposal to you, understanding condition of roadways. Their year that they were put in, the budget factor, uh, so knowing how much money we could potentially have. And make that proposal to you.
There are other options, like for McVeigh West. I don't know if it's a good option. Uh, Cape Seal. It's like the micro that we used to do. But it has a chip seal underneath it. It's basically. If you see our fiber mat, how it goes down, it's fiber mat, the chip seal rolled in and then they put the, the micro over it. So it's gonna be. It's gonna look like an asphalt road. The chip seal is gonna seal a lot of that alligator cracking. And we're gonna get another eight to ten years out of that road.
Ian, is that what we did on golf here, Court?
We've never done, we've done micro.
That was, we did micro on golf.
We've done micro, you played the road down first.
No, this is right over, over. Now, like, there, they would have to fix, if there's any of the areas that. Where the alligator cracking or the bases failing, they would have to fix that base failure, uh, before they did that.
So, I, I mean, uh, this is certainly not my strength, so I'm not. And I'm. Obviously, smaller package, an option, or you do, you don't do anything so that you can do more at once. If there's not a logical way to make the breaks, right, in terms of what you do or don't do. I, you know, it's been a while since I've driven the entire township to say. Where the worst, you know, where the most needed. Where the worst, you know, where the most need is. But I, I think, I mean, I think that in some years it might be one or the other and you switch back and forth. I mean, I'm not looking for something different for my road than is this done for anybody else. I don't need the gold flakes or anything like that.
I don't have fiber.
But.
Oh, my God. But here's, listen, here, here's where the, here's where the Cape Seal makes sense. The Cape Seal makes sense where we don't have curb.
Exactly.
Because where you just have it, you're not going to see, you're not going to see it, you know, because you're, you're adding what? How much are you adding on top of the existing road?
Oh, quarter inch.
Yeah, maybe. But if you're looking at it, but to me, I think that's where.
You're covering the whole surface.
So what's that do? Do you have like the, the curb at the gutter? Like, how does that? I'm sorry.
Well, like now, aggregate.
Kind of.
That was in there. Kind of why you don't want it up in the hills. Where I've been hesitant about it there. There are neighborhoods that do do it with curb streets.
Don't we, I mean, but we have corner.
Corner curbs.
Right.
Yeah.
So wouldn't it do the same thing there?
It would settle in there just like, I mean, right now.
Today.
Aggregate settles in there all the time.
But you could, you could mill and do fiber mat at the curves and then do the Cape Seal where it moves away, you know, where you don't have the curb. You know what I'm saying? Like, you know, you could use the two conjunction, but do we have capes? I mean, is there?
We don't have any where.
No, but I'm saying, is there another community around?
I couldn't find out. I know.
Do you?
I'm not sure. I'd have to ask.
Okay, okay.
Who uses it?
Brown County.
Brown County, I'd like to go out and see it because, and then like, how, you know, like an older road, like not like, you know, new, but. Like it has been around for a long.
But I mean, we don't have to solve the problem.
We don't, yeah, right.
And, and back to, to the off, to the outsourced vendors. We do have a list of all of the vendors. Um, I think I mentioned to you, it's in PDF and I can't break the PDF to put it into a spreadsheet. So I'm going to try to, um. I need to see if, do you have the, the grown up version of Adobe? Where you can.
Add the Acrobat Pro.
Yeah.
Yeah, that one.
Yeah, yeah, that one. Okay. So if I can do that, would you mind putting this list that we have into a spreadsheet instead of?
Instead, instead of P- PDF?
Yeah.
Yeah, turning it into a spreadsheet.
Thank you. I don't have that. I have the junior version. Uh, so then, so I, because I think it'll be more useful and we can kind of filter in and out what we have. So, um, we'll get that to you.
Yeah, I think, I think that's, that's, that's our start. It's a small start, but that's our start. And then. I and I really, we need to start looking at the combinations that we could. Make happen for next year. That is a much smaller package than what we're used to. Um, I, I, I just don't like doing nothing as far as that, but. Our roads, honestly, our roads are good roads. I mean, I've driven townships that are horrific. I mean, you know, so, you know, what we've done in the past, I mean, has worked. I think, I agree with Andy, I agree with Jim. In regards to, you know, making sure we have fiber mat and then we do a preservative over top of, you know, your sandwich. But I think it does make it last much longer and we would like to get to. A rotation of something like twenty two years instead of twenty years. I mean, we're, we're at ten, fifteen. We got twenty and I think with the technology that we have today, we can push it out two more years even, so.
Well, I think, I think with the fiber mat, I think we'll see. See it pushed out quite a bit.
So.
If not twenty four, twenty five.
Right.
With what we have, the square yards of the roads that we have right now, to pay that twenty four year cycle, we would have to do. Almost ten thousand square yards of resurfacing a year. That's averaged seventeen dollars or eighteen dollars a. Square yard.
You get on that twenty four cycle.
We get on a twenty four year cycle, we would have to do, that would require us doing ten thousand.
Ten thousand linear.
Square yards of resurfacing.
Yeah, but the problem is we have concrete work that.
Yeah.
Still has to fit into that cycle.
Right, but we're through, like the concrete's on a twenty four year cycle. It's on a fifty.
Fifty, sixty years. You look at some of those courts.
And you have, do you have the, um, thing where, um, you know, the streets that are yet to get curves?
Uh, I don't have, well, I do have a list. All that's really left up in the hills is. It's going to be in the near future is a poll anyway. We did a lot of spot repairs on Circle on the Green and. Uh, Blind Brook. I would really want to go back on those until we were in that cycle of resurface.
Yeah.
If we can hold off that long.
For calling, like, would we, would you ever consider doing just curbs rather than the curb and gutter? Cause the curbs only on, it was on O U.
Mm-hmm.
Shady.
Yeah.
I think that looks better. Thought that was a fair amount cheaper.
And I could pull that. I think I still have that somewhere, but we didn't save a whole lot of money in the road. Going, uh, straight curve there versus curb and gutter.
Well, I know that there was a lot of concern that the gutters were gonna, were gonna crumble over time and that hasn't occurred.
The old gutters, it, it, it's not the gutters crumbling, it's the, it's the, I just think that area where asphalt meets the gutter. That's what kind of breaks down, you know, and some, I'm telling you, sometimes that heaves up in the spring where the asphalt is. Two inches higher than the gutter.
Right.
And then, you know, then you got, it's just, it's just weird and I don't know, I just.
I mean, our issue.
If I could, if I could magically go back, I would have do curbs only and. I just think it looks better.
It's just that drive, it's just the driveway transition. It's, it's not as smooth as.
It's like it's a mill. We also had.
Milling.
That was the, the milling operating was the challenge because.
We'd have to ask for.
I mean, they dug into the curb.
Right.
A lot. So when we put down new curbs, then they just came back and they grinded, it, it, it looked bad.
It does, yeah.
But if you do it right the first time, it should be. Perfect.
Yeah, it's getting able to mill the road prior to replace it.
Um, so Ian and, and Chat, as you're working through this, there's. For the strategic plan, recognizing we're likely not going to be able to do all of it or maybe it. But for the strategic plan, there's a lot of items on here that I'm not clear what we're talking about in terms of costs. Um, like the spring and summer projects. I know some of those are on as needed, but do we know like on ballpark, we're talking about. Five or ten or twelve and it's each one, it runs us X, you know what I mean? Or asphalt patch. And I, is there a, a way to get just even based on historical?
Well, I can work that. I've found some projections in the past for like asphalt patching.
Okay. And then the rejuvenating concrete repairs, those items. I see that you have in there about the truck.
Yeah, I, I'm not sure, was that taken out of this?
I took it out just because I figured that's probably not happening.
Yeah, let's.
Is that livable? Is that?
On the truck, we need, we do need to look into replacing the bed.
Just the bed part, it's not the truck, I'm sorry.
Uh, I had it, we talked. Fifteen to twenty, I think fifteen probably saved. Uh. When I checked last year, we were right around twelve. Still bed.
This is the five fifty, right?
This is the five fifty. So two thousand seven, five fifty. It does run good. The problem with extending the life is we get it five more years with the new bed. Start having problems at five years, we're going to be looking at replacing one of the large internationals. Our, our oldest international. Two thousand and ten. So it'll be at twenty years old. And that will need to be replaced.
Okay. And so then I did see the estimates in there with the current issues and concerns. So. John, I know you had talked about the garage heating system.
Well, that's, that's this garage, his garage.
Oh, you're talking about the, oh, it actually says, I guess I could read, but that's hard. Um, okay, so the garage heating system. And I'm sorry, did I jump ahead?
No, no, I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm going back.
And then gutters. Because certainly like the high priority items where we're creating maybe drainage issues or leaks and different things like that, we've got to prioritize. Here. Is that counted for Becky?
For which?
Like the gutters and the, the back under current issues, concerns, the garage heating system and the gutters? Yeah, so it is.
That's covered.
That's covered.
Twenty twenty five, correct?
Okay. Okay.
I was hoping to ask for approval on the gutters like this. Either the next meeting I do have to read.
Andy.
Ask the list.
Sorry.
We were talking about gutters, um, getting approval perhaps at the next meeting. For some of these more pressing, um, repair issues on the back of.
Yeah.
The page. Just want to make sure you were the conversation.
And what line item does that fall into, Becky, or Michelle?
Um, that would be under building repairs, repairs and maintenance.
Do we have that in twenty twenty five?
No, we have it in the budget. It's just, those are items that are coming that likely helps keep issues from becoming larger.
Do we know where, I mean, this is appropriated seventy nine, but do we know what our actual is through? September.
The one ten, um, that would be one that. Appropriations, yeah. Hmm, so the left front, twenty twenty one. Okay, I've got my appropriations. There we've spent seventy five thousand. Out of the one ten.
Out of the one ten?
Yeah.
So your intent is to come with the estimates or whatever, the update, and maybe this is already it, but the updated estimates to get the guttering.
Yeah.
And the garage heating? Are you looking at both of those right now?
Uh, I, we're going to need the garage heating before we go into winter.
Right.
Those answers, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
And those are up to date. These, these burners and the garage, that would be something that we would purchase and install ourselves.
So the accounting software that we had, that we were using, um, our funds for. Whatever is that? All right, I mean, I was late.
You're going to want to watch the minutes later. I'll, I'll.
If you want time, then we could fly halfway through. Would not retire.
Don't worry, I was able to fill my schedules to accommodate. Okay.
I've got ten thirty deadline.
It's really working really well. I've apologized to a lot of people. Um, so what other items do we want to cover?
Been great.
We're going to, we're going to work, Andy's going to send me something. We're going to work on a spreadsheet for the roads. We're going to try to incorporate it in our assets program, so if you kind of. Give a better idea, have an Andy's idea. Um, and we'll come back together, the gutter, the heaters. Um, but we'll, we'll come back with a package. We'll also work on the, the outsourcing that we've done and try to bring. What we can bring in-house, so.
And after, after Luke gives me a, a locked version, then I'll send up the list now.
Do you think we're going to hear back from the auditor by the end of the month?
Um, yeah, I think so. I think the last piece Faith sent over the last thing they were looking for. Um, this morning. So she was targeting by the end of the month. So, yeah. And on this weekend, this one.
Cool.
Get that done.
Bye bye.
We are ready to move on. Yeah.
Yeah, that was a slog. That was a slog.
Um. I appreciate everybody pulling all the information together. And for those of you who took the time and.
It's just like, they march for the good of the order type, they keep track of what's happening down the state. I'm sure, and people coming up and asking. If there's this plan to like, black property taxes.
There's no reply, there's no campaign. That's why they're, that's why they're trying to rush to come up with a proposal. It's, it's in schools, libraries, uh, they just get a little bit, but we don't have.
Well, the tax. It affects schools of.
Yeah.
The most, I mean, in townships, obviously, but.
Well, I think everybody anticipates that it could look to somebody file lawsuits in attorney. Um. No way to.
We beat go for this. We got, you got twelve minutes.
Here's my real question. He sends you a picture of a sandwich.
That would be point two, point two, carrying on. It's not that hard, just write it down. Before you close, I need to make a motion, uh, on AI training for thirty one. Thirty, thirty one thousand be authorized AI training, which. That will also, you also get authorization to enter in, in, in any agreements or. Um, contracts that allow us to get that money reimbursed, uh, from. Uh, the state, the state of Ohio. Second.
Uh, vote?
Yeah.
Vote?
Yeah, that's right, he was. He took over.
It should be coming.
It's called consistency.
Anything else? I would, I would make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Vote?
Yes.
Yes.